I don't have the dimensions, but it's .11 acres.
So ten of the acres.
Yeah, it's a wedge, it's a wedge, you know which wedge is, don't you? If you're driving down, if you drive down.
It's on the west side, Shell or these sides?
The west side, and it's in that sliver right up against the.
The condos come down this way, the boat ramp is right here, say. The boat ramp, those condos sit here like this. And then the Jim Bob say, I've got to bring them over. So the Jim Bob sits here abandoned. That lot is located about right here. Right there. And then this is Shell. Fish plants, you know, like right here. Maybe that other buildings here, the slimy old fish plant. The bay, you know, this is the boat ramp, so it kind of runs like that. This is Shell. Though this is all parking lot in here, what it would be is an access for, for possibly trailer parking like this, you know. Trailer parking that could get some of these trailers off the highway that are parked just all over the place. It's just a, that's what the talk was, fine.
Thank you. So you know, assessed value and asking price are two different things. And so we don't know what they ask, if they were to offer, we don't know what the asking price is tonight.
That's correct.
So maybe it just behooves us on this one to get the price. And I'd like to talk about it also in context with our next topic. Because there is an opportunity there to work on this parking issue in D.C. So it's all right, I'd suggest that we ask the staff to just inquire and see if they want to sell the parking. Is that okay? I know this screen.
It's fine with me. There's a lot of property we can.
I, I, I.
What about the right property?
I just like, I am a student of economics, okay? And that all resources are precious. Okay, the property is precious, our dollars are precious, there's only so many of them. And I'm here to advocate for downtown, okay? As a businessman downtown and a property holder down there. As this piece of property and is, is, would offer more parking for the marina that we have, the small marina that we have down here. If I, and depending upon what the price, I guess I'm saying if we could put up signs and parking on the highway, we could limit the, the, the traffic down to the marina in other ways, the boat ramp. What I'm saying is, is that the city owns basically two parking lots that I own. The one in front of dockside charters that encompasses the front to the boat harbor. And over here next to the boat ramp, all these spaces, enter the park. The rest of the parking in town, the ones that, the spaces that front 101 are owned by the state. And the rest of the parking downtown is privately owned, yet leased, some of the lots are leased to the city by private property owners like Rich Allen, like the condos. And so, in my opinion, with limited resources that we have, unless we get some windfall, I would, I would behoove this being thrown into the parking issue, where we should spend our dollars. And I think that the marina or the boat ramp and the boat harbor, they've got their fair share of parking. They have all the parking in Depot Bay. Downtown has zero, except for the state parking, which the state owns, and parking that the city leases for a dollar a year. So that's, I, that's a perspective, at least from my, my point of view on this property. Depending upon what the price is.
Yeah. I still say we find out what they want for it, if they want to sell. It's good information, if not the worst.
Everybody's in agreement on that? We'll have the staff look into the vice on it and get back to the council for another agenda item. All right, item C on unfinished business. Authorization of travel expenses to Washington, D.C. for the mayor and council president. Would they like to start on that? How about Perry?
I do have a cost estimate for two people. What you were looking, what I was looking at was a five-day window. Day one traveling, day five traveling, providing three days in the middle for meetings. That may need to be expanded, but the cost estimates for two people for that timeframe, and the cost estimate includes like everything I could think of. Driving to the Portland airport, either staying in a lesser expensive hotel that provides an airport shuttle or paying the daily economy parking lot fee. The air, the lodging, ground transportation back there, food back there, the whole thing. And the estimate based on the cost that, using kind of a median for lodging, a little over $7,000 for two people for that five-day period.
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Perry. With respect to the discussion last council about the plan we're going there in preparation, I understand, Mr. President, that you, we've had talks about that quite a bit. And you've done some research on how to get prepared so that we, we have a plan.
Yeah, I would encourage you.
You could go ahead and.
Is that my segue?
Yeah, that's it, that's, we said.
Thank you. Steve is right, and I've discussed this much with Steve, and I've discussed some with Jerome, a lot, much with the mayor. I also have contacted three lobbyists from my past life who were congressional staffers to get some insight. And today, here in City Hall, we had a teleconference with, I'm gonna call him Fred A. because I can't pronounce the likely his last name.
Fred the Wolfman.
Yeah, it's very difficult, but in any case, Perry was in this conversation. And what we did is we talked to Fred about proper procedure, about doing this, about what it is we need, what, how we do it, who we meet, yada, 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 and it goes something like this. I know it had been put in that we should go in June or July, but his opinion was, is that we need to do a little research first. And we need to do a couple other things, but his timing was better, he thought it was better for us to go in mid-fall. Because what happens is, is that in August, Congress recesses, Congress, the representatives are back in this area from the month of August into the first couple days of September. The session reconvenes mid-September and then goes to the Christmas break, which is sometime here December. And so Fred, for lack of his last name, today suggested a course of action, and I wrote some of the notes down, I know Perry did too. The idea is that we should, there's two options, there's two ways to do it. One is to present a program, all the I's and T's dotted across, you send it down to D.C. and then they shuffle away. Mr. Fred was of the opinion that the personal approach prior to the presentation of the program was key in this. He said that most small communities miss this point, how important it is to press the flesh and discuss with the appropriate people back in Washington what it is you're trying to accomplish. And we're not talking about hard numbers, we're talking about going back, not only talking to the congressional staff, the congressional members, but also the congressional staff, but more importantly, he talked about the importance of us going to the different agencies in D.C. with the general plan. And so he suggested the following, he said, do your diligence, get your packet together. We talked, Steve, about electronic format, whether it was YouTube, plug-in USB drive, or CD-ROM. He said that is not the way to do it. And I was surprised by that, I was really surprised by that. He said the most, the most relevant way to do it is, you're going in to meet them, so what you do is you have a finite, very, very slick presentation of the town, of what it is the town's worth is to the coastal economy, emphasizing the economics of it all to the community and the region. And then in there, we, and I kind of envisioned this through, I thought about this a lot this afternoon, because he said less is more. He said that the more information you give them, the less likely it is they're going to spend the time to consume it. And so I've been thinking about that, Perry, and I'm seeing a glossy presentation kind of in a file folder that talks about Depot Bay in general and about what we're trying to accomplish, but when it comes to go to these different agencies, and I'll name them off in a couple minutes, we have an individual punch list or punch sheet going to them. For instance, he, you know, he said, you know, definitely the congressmen and the senators and their staff are key. In fact, they're the ones, they're going to really help us set the appointments with the staffers themselves. And he said, as far as meeting the different departments, the staff and the congressman will set this up for you, but he had suggested, and I also did some other thinking, that we have components here that we need for this town in many different places. This is not just a ask for money for the hardware. This is an ask for the money for the economic health of the town. And part of the discussion tonight was about the economic health of the town, which parking is a partial driver. So he suggested in that respect, if we talk to USDA or HUD concerning the acquisition of land. There's also the Department of Commerce, and their job and primary goal is to grow commerce in the United States of America, hopefully in the state of Oregon, and most especially in the small town of Depot Bay. He said also, you can contact the Transportation Department. He said Homeland Security, because we are a port of refuge. There were so many different places we could go, that he suggested that we work our diligence on getting our packet together, our glossy presentation. And what we do then is we go in August and we go personally meet with our congressmen's, and we're talking about Trader and Defazio, and then he said the state, the senate, which would be Merkley and Wyden. We go there, talk to them, tell them what we're going to attempt, that we're coming back to visit in such and such a date. And then engage the staffers at that point with the detail that I'm talking about in our glossy package. Have them help us figure out exactly who and what it is that we need to go meet these people in D.C. And involve our staff in part of the process, and then also the principals. He made a big point, and this was something some of my friends back in Seattle had said, is that you want to make sure that the principal electors are the talking to the elected officials in Washington, and they can't say no to you coming and visiting. That includes not only the congresspeople, but also the various departments that we need to go to make this introduction as to who and what Depot Bay is all about. There was a lot more information there.
Mr. Mayor, just a question as you're going along. So are you talking about two trips to D.C. or one trip to see during the recess when the congresspeople are back here? See them here?
See them here and then all, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify.
You're right.
To see our congressional staffers here, he's right, I didn't mention it. And then we're in August.
It's cool, we're here.
Well, it's also they're here, and we want to announce that we're making the effort to come and see them. Because most small communities are not doing this anymore for budgetary reasons. It's a tough pill to swallow, I mean, we're talking about spending somewhere around $7,000. As Mr. Grant had said earlier, the money doesn't grow in trees, and we only have finite quantity, so I'm very mindful of that. But there, our lobbyists are saying that this is an overlooked area, that we should really, really do this. And he said also something about the lack of earmarks. He went on to the process years ago, while he was back in Washington, that his senator or congressman, I don't know who he worked for, this is the Fred fellow I'm talking about. He said that it used to be you go to see your representatives with a request, and they would earmark it and they would jam it into funding. And he said those days are over in Washington, D.C. He says what we need to do is we need to go and present ourselves, present our program, and stay with it and follow up every step of the way and guide them to the conclusion that Depot Bay is important and we need the funding. And that's the job of both August and a trip in the fall. Then once we do that, we continue to work our plan to finalize the items. Because we have a lot of research to do still. I mean, even for Perry and I to guess on what it's going to cost, that's a guesstimate, because it's going to be driven on the scheduling.
Absolutely.
Because we don't know if we can, you know, maybe we'll see all the congressional people one day, and then we have to see the different departments two or three days later, then we have to go see somebody next week. And so that like extends the funding, so there's a lot of what ifs in this whole process to get there. I'm almost finished, I'll let you guys kick in. I think it was pretty clear from our conversation that he thought it was best to send the final polished package that we're continually following up and working the staffers sometime in January or February, was that, is that, did I write that right?
Yes, that's very calm.
Let's see, what else we have? Also worked with state representatives, I said that. Oh, you know, the other thing was really interesting, I had never considered. He said, don't forget about the regulatory aspect of your visit. He said, you know, you're going to basically grease the wheels and grease the skids, he agreed with that term, and you're going to introduce yourself. But you know, he said, funding isn't the only thing, he says regulatory help can be given by these kind of visits, and we can raise that to another level as, how about this? And this is just a wild, off-the-cuff suggestion, but I heard today from somebody that the Eagles have moved in on North Rock or Gull Rock up by the condos, and there are no more cormorants up there because they were snacked on. Why do we have to protect those cormorants anymore when they're not there? And that's a regulatory issue, that's an extreme example. But as an example of some of the other things we can possibly talk about and request of our legislators. And with that, I'm done, for now.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I want to applaud you right now for the due diligence that you have done the last two weeks. That's excellent, excellent needs assessment. Thank you. Makes me very happy.
I was never doing a lot of gloves when we worked.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Before we go any further, I want everybody to know that the ball is rolling. Perry, today, in my direction, has contacted all these people that are pertinent to this visit. And she's going to continue to do that, or to do the contacting until it comes the time to be back there and be with the senators.
So in all that, you know then, what a good, I mean, I think maybe I just got too confused there. There's a lot, when, when the, do we not know when the right time to go to D.C. will be?
We, well, we know it's sometime in the fall from our guy.
And being in touch with our senators and representatives, then by what they have to tell us, then we'll know.
Right, and the idea on the trip into, because it would be A.J. and I and whoever going into Salem to see our guys, is to get it, get them prepared, get them thinking about this, make sure it's on their calendar, make sure it's on their docket. They can't do earmarks, but they can twist arms, they can help us, I was assured of that. I walked away today very, very encouraged by what I heard. And in addition to the other phone calls I made back to Seattle to former staffers. There, like I said, there's a lot of research to do. I, I don't even know if that figure that Perry barked out was the right figure, not barked out, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
Was that Mark?
The one. That, that's my little attention thing.
I'm impressed.
I have a whistle on my phone. In any case, you know, I'd like to make the motion, but I'm going to clarify it after we make the motion. And that motion is this, is that we continue on the path to go to Washington, D.C. To do this PR trip in advance of our packet and our presentation next spring. That's the motion. Somebody just seconded, I want to caveat that then.
Explain the motion.
Okay, I don't, how about I don't explain, how about I explain the motion first, and then I'll make the motion afterwards? That's probably a better way, that's probably a better way. I, tonight, don't want to talk about the funding because we don't know what it is.
Yeah.
Tonight, I don't want to talk about the dates to go to D.C. because we don't know what it is. Tonight, I don't want to talk about the content, because we're going to, as a council, sit down and hammer this out and provide the content we need to go both to Salem, to Washington, and then the final package. Those things we're going to have to develop. We are, there's no way to do that tonight, but what I would like to do is make the motion that we do authorize the staff to continue on the process and to help us work towards going to Washington, D.C. in the fall.
I'll second that.
Ignore the discussion.
Please, I have a lot of discussion now, I don't want to get into.
The feedback I get from citizens of Depot Bay and lots of it is they really appreciate the deliberation on this subject that we've done. I just wanted to say that, and I want to thank Zeke again for all the homework and due diligence and discussions and the teamwork that's gone into this. I'm impressed, thank you.
You know, I, I, tonight, I don't, it's getting late, I don't know how much you want to spend on this topic, but I think at our next council meeting, we should put this back on the agenda. And we should discuss at that time, we're going to get a little feedback from Perry on some of her inquiries and her research. Steve, it strikes, and Jerome, it strikes me that we have a multi-headed beast that we're talking about here. We're not talking just harbor, we're talking harbor, we're talking commerce, we're talking sewer, wastewater, infrastructure, all these things. I think we need some breakout groups. I also think that we should deliberate whether we have some professional help, not taking away from our staff because they're terrific, but some professional help to put together the packets so that they're safe when we get there. This has got to be magnificent.
It's safe.
Safe. So this is part of the discussion coming up, Jerome?
Oh, yeah, and I just want to encourage you as part of this discussion. And we'll go for the funding later about really organizing this trip. And I'm glad you got some really good input from, you know, the people, people that really know how things are done. And that would be the lobbyists back in Washington, D.C. They're not paid not to get things done, they're paid to get things done, that's why they're able to stay in business. That being said, for, at least for the Oregon contingency, I would like to encourage, you know, one or more counselors besides the mayor and the president to meet with our lawmakers.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Maybe we can invite them here.
Right, and maybe, I mean, and also in the meantime, maybe consider if another counselor wanted to go to, one more counselor wanted to go to D.C., and the council was applying to approve three, that, and there was more than one counselor that wanted to go, then we put names and numbers into hats, so to speak, and somebody draw it out. I will declare that I'm not interested in going to D.C., I'm just saying that maybe that's something that the council could consider.
I have no issue with that, that's fine, we have a lot to discuss. You know, my first inclination is two is coming, three is the crowd, but I don't know that yet. I don't know that yet, because we're still learning. And you know, I'll tell you what, I've got one year and six months, and some people will love that, some people will hate it. I'm going to work my butt off to make sure we get to D.C. and we get some funding to take care of the city for the next 20 years.
I'm going to do a break.
Excuse me, sir?
The vision of the, the look video. You start out from the universe.
We know, we have something.
You start bringing it down into, into the earth, and then you switch down into the North America, and then you keep going down. It is, but here, then we go down to outline Oregon with the geography in there, and then Depot Bay, the center of gravity of not just the Oregon coast, but of the entire planet. We have the capacity to do that.
You know, actually, Perry, part of our conversation today from Fred was that people don't know how important the coast of Oregon is to the economy, to the full state of the state. You're absolutely right, Jerome, you're absolutely right. You know, we actually have, we have a feel-good video already, but we could talk about a, kind of a thing. But he was very specific. He said people will not plug into your USB, people are not likely to go to YouTube, and people may look at a video, but it requires more than one step of holding your hand. It's probably too many steps, that's what he said today. So I was, I was so surprised.
I liked it, that's a needs assessment. That he just did.
Personally, I thought it was a really neat idea to put a YouTube channel together. Here, look, guys, we're like modern, you know, we're not living in the Stone Age, and he said that's not the way they're doing. I was really surprised.
This is very exciting.
So, okay, so we have a motion on the table, and we also have to go for some more discussion, I'll shut up, I've said enough.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Jan Vito?
Yes.
Brad?
Hi.
Thank you, Zeke.
You're welcome.
Yes, very good.
Wow, yeah, well, you blew me away.
I have this, I'm just sitting here thinking of the opening credits of Game of Thrones, where, you know, Lincoln City, Newport, Depot Bay.
Well, you're wearing the gem on the top.
With the sun, you know.
We're going to have to be awful careful with that one, because Dogma's done that already.
No, if I were one of these Pacific Ocean babies, right here.
Yeah, Dogma did that already, he'll put it in reverse. They start with the earth, name it up in eternity.
Wow.
All right, new business, planner services contract renewal.
Is this the way you want me to vote?
No, just.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, city councilors, first of all, thank you for considering my extension request. I provided a letter to you, and in the first part of that letter, I just wanted to identify the planning services that are provided. That's divided into two categories, the, what I call the current planning, and then the long-term planning. The current planning deals with kind of the everyday day, dealing with, dealing with the peoples, with the property owners, developers, business owners, those interested in buying or selling properties, realtors, appraisers, et cetera. So that's, that's kind of the day-to-day, and then there's the long-term planning that is really kind of project-oriented and in hopes of being a benefit to the community. So there's a list of the long-term planning services that are provided. So my request is, is to renew for another additional three years. And so the only changes that I've identified proposing to my contract are for that time period and for the compensation. And on the compensation, I did provide a brief paragraph about a survey that has been done for contract planners in the state of Oregon, that was a survey, there were 28 results of what the hourly rates were. I wanted to show that because I've, I've always, you know, Phil, I've attempted to try to keep my rates down to a reasonable rate for the city, as well as trying to get some fair compensation. And I've been able to do that because I don't have the, all the overhead costs that are generally associated with the COVID impact. I do have some, albeit, such as my professional and general liability insurance, health insurance, et cetera. But I don't have all the, all the overhead costs. So what I'm proposing is to increase my compensation. So, uh, so what I'm proposing is, um, to increase my compensation, uh, the first year, it's, albeit, still below that, that average hourly rate, and then with months increases the following two years for a three-year period. And I guess, in conclusion, I'll be more than happy to address any questions or, or comments you may have, but I, I do believe that we have, uh, a lot of good things going on, we've got a lot of opportunity, uh, some good projects on the books or forthcoming, and I certainly look forward to, uh, to working on those and helping some of those to an information.
Zeke? Larry, thank you for your service and passion for working with us. Uh, my question is that, uh, after hearing Zeke and listening to, uh, our discussions about some of the global, uh, concerns that we have, and this project that we're working on, uh, we talked about, uh, professional services. I'm, I don't want to assume anything, so I'm gonna ask you, how, how do you feel about your role in helping us get ready for this big deal that we're working on, uh, the Washington DC and all the stuff, research that we have to do?
Uh, I, you know, I, I think it's exciting, I think there's a lot of opportunity, you know, I think there's a lot of, um, I guess what I see kind of planning-related components too, I mean, it certainly goes way beyond, uh, planning or planning services that I provide, but I think there's some components there that I can assist in, and I'm willing to jump in and.
You're on the team.
Yeah.
You're on the team.
We need money.
Okay, uh, thank you.
I, I just, um, on your, shoot, do you have O E insurance, Larry?
I do.
Okay, I thought so, you want some of it on that?
Uh, exactly, I can tell you.
I never do that, I always wanted to ask you that.
Uh, yes.
O E, yeah, all errors and emissions?
I've got, um, conferency general liability, uh, and automobile for a million, professional liability insurance for a million.
Oh, wow, okay. But you're gonna help us on this project.
Um, Larry, um, do, do your services include if one of the counselors want to call you at home?
Call me at home?
Yeah.
Sure, I, you know, that's fine.
Okay. I mean, if that hap- if somebody has a dire need to call you at home, I know it's a stretch.
Take them out to dinner or something?
On the, and would, would, uh, I, I would assume that would be on the clock, basically, if you called me at home.
Yeah.
Maybe, or maybe not.
But it depends on when the conversation was. But, yeah, I, I'm open to, the calls we needed.
Is this an action item tonight?
Yes.
Let me, uh, I, I would just little, provide a little narrative that I think that the city needs a planner. Uh, Larry, Mr. Lewis, and I've had, knowing, you know, how the conversation went ahead except the scope of business here in Deepwater Bay questioning. So, I, Larry and I are not friends, we're acquaintances. So, um, but that, uh, he provides a service that's necessary to the operation of the city, and he's got a sense of history here, how many years that have he?
Almost fifteen.
Okay, fifteen years, and that's, I think that's important for us, he's, that means he, uh, conducts himself in a pers- a personal manner, and his services are encapsulated in, 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 in his cost right here. So, I would move that we, um, retain Mr. Lewis as, as our, as our city planner.
With the new rates?
With the new rates, yes.
Second.
Most have been made in second, uh, do we have any more, Mr.? That being said, call please.
Sparks?
Yes.
Olson? Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Thank you to everybody very much.
Lots of phone calls at home now.
Yeah, that's right.
Rivers included in that.
That's right, you know, you know, I have to tell you a story. One of the very first people I met here, and that's nine years ago now, met here is Larry Lewis on Agate Beach where his dog and my dog play together. As I met here.
Yeah, we're in blood. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
On to the fleet of flowers.
You're happy.
Hi, Debbie.
Hi, Debbie.
Good evening, mayor, councilwoman, and woman. I am here to ask for permission to hold the seventieth fleet of flowers ceremony this year. We'll be using the harbor on, we set up on Sunday afternoon.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And Monday, it's usually cleaned up by twelve o'clock.
So moved.
I second. We don't take a whole lot of convincing for this.
No, no cannons, please.
No, what?
Your cannons, I must, I must, I'm sorry, but, no.
No, we're not.
Come on, yeah, you can't do it right without.
Okay, call please.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Aye.
Sparks? Aye. I do have a question for, for Debbie. Is that all right? Okay.
If I have an answer.
Oh, well, um, our citizens are, are, uh, look at the fleet of flowers with a lot of pride. It's a signature event here. Uh, the console and, uh, input from our citizens, uh, usually includes, uh, are, are we gonna be, have, are we gonna have fleet of flowers ten years from now? Are we gonna have, uh, salmon bake ten years from now? Are we sustainable, uh, with each, and so we've talked about coming together as a community to look at answering that question, and I'm wondering if you would like to participate, uh, from fleet of flowers in that discussion of how we, as a whole, with all of our signature events, especially fleet of flowers, which I'm personally have a lot of pride in because I'm a, a US Navy veteran, uh, can, would you, would you help us with that project?
I am interested, I, when I took on this project, I committed to five years, um, it's been five years. I don't see anybody else in mind.
So you need some.
Want to do it?
You need a succession plan.
Um, I will always participate.
But, but the succession plan is what, what's under?
It's just that every year, we make it by.
The skin of our teeth.
The skins of our teeth, and this year, we were blessed with our fundraising.
Thank you, Jerome.
Thank you, Clary.
Overwhelming.
The fish and chips.
That lady's amazing.
The, the fish and chips were delicious, so I hope we can do that again. But we, we really feel that we need sustainability and succession on our signature events for this town. The citizens are really asking for us to tell them, uh, give them some assurance on that. So, uh, we're looking for, uh, uh, your support, uh, to talk to us about that with our ideas for sustainability.
The only difference that I see is the conflict is fleet of flowers is a nonprofit, the salmon bank and the boat show is a chamber money-making event.
Well, we, we.
So, you know.
Okay, so.
And I don't want the fleet of flowers to become a chamber event.
Okay, that, that, that's good input because what we're talking about is a, a bigger picture, uh, possibly a, a, a charity foundation for the town that, that's gonna do that kind of fundraising and, uh, succession planning and sus- sustainability stuff so that we don't have it all mixed up with, uh, with, with the stuff that you're talking about. That's kind of what the vision is.
Yeah, I think, um, also.
Do you like, do you, do you see that?
Yeah, I see that, but I also see we need to pull for more people because I see the same people every year doing the same thing every year, and I don't see any new people coming in, and I don't see any younger people coming in.
You're right, and that's part of.
I got my age, and then we got the older, and they're dying off in health issues.
That's right.
I don't see anybody in the thirty, forty category coming up.
Wow, and you, you're exactly right, and that's why we're talking.
Unfortunately, the children that grow up here turn out to be successful and get out of town.
That's right, well, uh, that's why we're having the conversation, and that's why I'm, uh, asking you about it because we need to come together and figure all this out. And I can see some folks in the audience that would probably get behind that, uh, conversation. I'm looking at her right now, uh, uh, to help us figure out ways of making all this stuff, uh, sustainable.
It's gonna take time, and lots of people committed.
Yeah, right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. You get to do it? Yes. Thank you, good evening, you're doing great time.
Thanks for being so patient. Okay, I'll do a bid award, harbor pump up and dump station.
Okay, that would be me, um, we got a grant, and there's a flyer I put out for council mayor. Um, this is for the, uh, Oregon State Marine Board grant, um, the city was approved for a, uh, dude pump and dump station, this is the, on the fuel dock where boats can pull up and, uh, they can drain their, um, sanitary sewer holding tank on their vessels. Um, it's a, uh, it's a, uh, a pump grant that, um, it was, uh, what was the total for the grant?
I think it's a maximum of forty cents.
More, yeah, maximum of forty. We got some really good, um, prices in, actually, we put an RFP out. We had two folks, uh, two companies that, uh, did the bid, and, uh, or selected a bid. And as you can see, EMP Industries, fifteen nine nine nine, Keiko, uh, Pump Equipment, twenty-one forty-five. Now, um, they're both real similar, the specs were the same, um, different brand names. The EMP is what we currently have now, it's, uh, it's kind of on its last leg. We poured some money into getting it re, you know, running again, and, and, uh, it's good timing that we replaced that. It's a Sandy Sailor is the, the name brand, I've got a, a lot of the.
Sandy Sailor?
Sandy Sailor is the, uh, sanitized sailor for boats, so it's, 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 uh, stainless steel, it's got a really good pumping system, um, just, but it's basically a swap-out for this. This would be the twenty-fifteen version of what the old station is. It's got a lot more high-tech stuff on it, um, maybe user-friendly a little better, um, more, um, marine environment, uh, operational, uh, you know, uh, interface and stuff like that. So, um, it would be easy to hook up this one too, is another thing. So, with my recommendation, I, I hooked the council up to go, if EMP, um, already contacted the, uh, the gentlemen today, he's wondering if, uh, if he got the bid or not, I told him that I would like to hit him out by morning, so, you're over?
I'm curious, Brady, do we, uh, like on the one we already had, the EMP, do we do our own maintenance on it, or is it contracted with?
Yeah, actually, it's had very, the only maintenance we've had is some, um, corrosion wiring issues and stuff, so it's, um, as far as the, the pump, it's always worked, and the discharge pump, it's always worked, um, it's the corrosion issues and light, uh, bulbs and, uh, or things like that, little, little things that, wider maintenance, but yeah, we've been doing that, the stuff that either Buster Sticks Electric could handle, um, or, or could, you know, put a panel hole in or something.
Brady?
Um, sure.
And now, uh, the, the ring board that grant, does that cover the entire constor, is it a magic grant?
Really?
That's, that's staying. So, um, my question is, uh, is there, uh, uh, any guarantees on the hardware for, or, I mean, warranty on the, on the?
Yeah, there was, it was like three, you know, standard stuff, it's, it's hard used.
Five-year parts and labor?
Yeah, yeah, both, pump out warranty parts and labor, yeah. Uh, response customer service, they get text for, um, it's the number one selling pump out American.
I can't wait till we get our Sandy Sailor.
Our Sandy Sailor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve, uh, the, uh, Mr. Brady's.
Yeah, it's got to get that.
Uh, yeah, Brady's recommendation for EMP Industries fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollar quote for the grant from the State Marine Board.
I'll sign it.
Most have been made in second, uh, any more discussion? Call please.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Oops, Sparks?
Aye.
Did you know EMP stands for Experience Music Product?
Uh.
Yes.
Yes.
That's, yeah, that's Paul Allen's weird museum.
That's the chain he had, I was trying to open something else for it, the.
Electromagnetic pulse.
Yeah.
On to correspondence, Brady, yeah.
We have one item of correspondence this evening, it's, uh, in your, in your packet, it's a copy of an email from Cheryl Car- Carlton at, uh, Council of Governments, and attached to that, or maybe, I don't know if I can back that, maybe in the backside is a letter from the Council of Governments addressed to our mayor. Please join us in celebrating Older Americans Month, May twenty fifteen. Um, and I think I also included there what they sent as their sample proclamation.
Yeah.
And on the very back should be a proclamation specific to the city of Deepwater Bay to proclaim the month of May twenty fifteen as Older Americans Month in the city of Deepwater Bay, if you would choose to do so.
We need a motion, but, but on the younger American.
Sure, doesn't apply to me, but.
And it doesn't bother you at all?
Will Zeke, well, I'll.
I have a motion on that, because I accept, finally, I'm accepting that, uh, I'm an older American.
So what, we're, we're.
Make a motion so we can put that on the agenda.
To proclaim.
To proclaim that moment.
I just made that motion, twenty fifteen.
I'll second that on, on behalf of all of the people who are.
The younger.
Eventually going to be older, those Americans.
Pervention month. Yeah, that was a harsh one for me to accept.
Oh, Lord. It's tough to be seventy-seven, I'll tell you.
And you still don't want to admit it?
No.
Any questions, please?
I didn't.
Call please.
Gambino?
Yeah.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Olson?
I respect my orders. Yes.
And yes? Mathela?
Being a senior in the group, big yes.
And that's all the correspondence I had.
Thank you. Okay, Brady, you got a separate report?
I do, um, I'll start you quick, um, currently, we have a temporary employee, uh, in utility. Um, I'm, I'm transitioning that employee to moving him into the harbor. Um, I'm, I'm in need of some harbor help, uh, to help with maintenance, utility, uh, fueling. Got Halloween season starting, um, it's really picking up in the harbor, and, uh, also, I'm gonna use our, our temporary utilities still. Um, he's a great worker, I don't want to lose him, I'd like to, he's getting, um, insurance through Barrett and Associates now, they're going through temp service with, with this particular, um, temp employee. Um, he's getting insurance through them, I'd like to move to the harbor because of the fueling and the, and the importance of running the credit card machine and, and taking some bigger responsibilities under his belt. Uh, he's getting eleven dollars an hour now, and, uh, uh, I'd like to move him, I'd give him a two-dollar raise to thirteen. The mayor and I talked about this, helping with his insurance, and maybe keep him on for a while, and, uh, but hopefully, uh, you know, it, it may work out in the future. So, there's nothing open right now, um, for that position. I have an operator, but it's, it, the operator is, is a really, uh, you know, you have mandate from the state and the health that, you know, DQ that have to be certified, so.
Brady, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On his insurance, um, with his current employer, is it, uh, through the Affordable Health Care Act, or, because this could affect his take-home pay? I, I, before we, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but if he's under the Affordable Health Care Act, and you give him a pay raise, it's gonna affect how much he's gotta pay for the health insurance. I think, before we automatically say we're gonna do this, I think we should check.
Okay.
Just a suggestion, because it's the real deal right now, for people.
He said, well, from what I understand, he said he had a, it was a pack, it was off, different packages offered through Barrett and, and that he, just, it's just under him, um, so it's a single policy just for him, uh, through them, but I'm not sure if it is one.
Before we, as I have no problem, did you say this guy is, is a great keeper? Could you inquire before we make a motion to give him a pay raise and make sure we're not jeopardizing this pay?
Right, by doing that, sure, absolutely.
Because if he's on the, uh, if they've offered him affordable healthcare, he, he may be on the sliding scale, he's getting a subsidy and by increasing his salary, we could actually be incurring a large liability for him in his taxes next year.
Right, okay, sure.
Oh, just Brady, uh, I just want to be clear on what kind of services he provides us and provides you.
Um, he's filling in for, one, one, one of our guys in, in utility, uh, is on temporary, or not temporary, he's on, um, light duty. Um, through our employee handbook, he's had a major back surgery and he's slowly making a comeback, but he's only able to do certain things and he's on, he's on disability, so he's only able to work a few hours, uh, through, through the week and, uh, to keep his disability until he comes back and he's still not a hundred percent, he just got, um, we just got an update from him, so he's gonna stay, uh, light duty for a while.
But he's on restricted duty and so, he is doing some things and it's just a, it's the.
The temporary is filling in, yeah.
So he's filling in, then what kind of, what kind of, uh, duties is he?
He's, uh, doing, uh, water meter readings, uh, water line repair, uh, parts and maintenance, uh, doing road, uh, pothole repairs to, uh,
Regular labor.
Yeah, regular utility labor, working with, uh, our distribution operator, Eric Buck, and works with him hand in hand. But at this point, I'm gonna move him to the harbor to do fueling, transactions, maintenance in the harbor, we gotta get things in, we gotta get all the finger docks put in and, uh, I really need a boost in, in projects in, in, uh, in the harbor and this guy is really.
Would you be helping our harbor master?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And there's good chemistry there, so I, uh, I think it's, it's, it's really gonna work out great for us because, uh, it's, makes everything run better and smoother and accountability is really key down there at this point.
So you can find out about the health insurance and get back to us next year?
Yes, you bet.
Okay.
I talked to him a little bit, did an employee evaluation, he said that, you know, he mentioned a couple of things, said maybe an option, it's up to the council and he said, great, thank you so much, I'd really like working with this crew, so.
There's one thing I'd like to add, that I know what a valuable employee he is, because I've watched him work and it's, he's really got his heart in it. And so, at that happy note, till we find out what the effect on the insurance is, I'd like to be able to call him back retroactively to this date on his pay.
Okay, sure.
And that's fine.
Okay, and, uh, one other, uh, issue is in, in the project, we had a, a grass boy, we called him, it was, uh.
A what?
A grass.
Why didn't, I'm sorry, just, how many hours is he putting in?
He's putting in eight hours days.
Eight, so every forty hours a week?
Yeah, yeah, through, through BBSI as a temp service.
So we'd be, so we'd be increasing it through the temp service?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so the, the, the grass guy, I, it's a guy that just cuts grass, runs a weed eater, um, I get him through the temp service again. It's maybe one or two days a week, but, um, our current co-goals are a, a maintenance guy, he's overwhelmed with, grass is really growing right now and he can't keep up with it, he does the bathrooms clean, you know, all the parks and buildings and the community hall and all this stuff and he's just, uh, he's doing what he can, but the only money he's building is on the writing on water, he can't do the weed eating. It's time consuming, so we need a, a grass cutting guy.
We did that last year, correct?
Yeah, and, and it only lasts for a few, you know, once, uh, maybe June, late June it wears out, but we don't really need the, the grass boy per se, um, anymore, so, but it worked out great.
How, how many hours do we do?
It was, it was probably sixteen hours, you know, it's, it's two eight hour days, like a Tuesday, Wednesday, and, uh, I think we, we paid ten bucks an hour. Um, it got somebody through Barrett and Associates, so we're just getting hold of that, if I, if they had someone, they'd want that.
So it's, uh, you say ten dollars an hour, sixteen a week?
Yeah.
So every month it's thirty two, sixty four, six hundred and four, okay, if he's ten dollars an hour, how much are we paying the temp service?
Uh, I think it's.
What's a little plus, thirteen or fourteen?
I think it's like thirteen or so.
So, you have a calculator when you do math, because we want to do a, a motion that they know the money, because if we sent out a, a money amount that we were gonna spend on this?
Well, I think, I think you're thinking about if we hired an employee.
No, I, I, I thought we had a discussion about the, uh, temporary employees and I thought that we made, I may be wrong, but I thought last year when we authorized this extra person, we made a motion for the number of hours or the total input of dollars, you know, to the budget.
Maybe, I'm sorry, I, I don't specifically recall.
Do we need to do that?
I, I think to authorize, um, for, just for what Brady explained, hire somebody sixteen hours a week at ten dollars an hour, as long as you know that when we, that employee through the temp service gets paid at ten dollars an hour, we, the city, are paying thirteen dollars an hour. And maybe some weeks there might be more than sixteen hours, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it looked great last year, I know it helped out a lot, I moved that we authorize Brady to hire the part-time grass boy, grass girl.
Yeah, okay.
To mow grass for the three or four months it's needed.
Okay, same, okay.
Don't worry about it. Politically, go please.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Okay, I have, um, just a couple on the right, real quick, we're, um, do, the crew's doing, uh, fire hydrant blow offs, um, through the north side of town, we get a lot south earlier in the year, um, the reason being, uh, Worldmark wants to fill their swimming pools and they fill from the fire hydrant and there's a lot of iron pipes, so the chance of not getting, uh, iron in the water, uh, in the swimming pools, it's kinda, it puts a stain on.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so, uh, anyway, the crew's been doing blow offs and it's been going pretty well. Um, we, we caused a little bit of trouble on North Point, but, uh, they were able to flush it out, get it through the day and notify folks, so. You might hear a little of that, so that's kinda what's going on. Uh, curb painting downtown, you know, ODOT does not do the curb painting, the city every year, uh, does that, maybe every other year. It's really in need of, so the crew's been, uh, coming in a little early, cleaning gutters, cleaning the curbs, prepping them for curb paint, for the bright yellow and the city purchase paint, we use our crew and our, all the application, all the products they're putting on and, uh, it's, uh, you know, we don't really think, ODOT really doesn't say gee thanks, it looks great or anything, we just do it to pretty our town up and make it safe uh, for the, for the tourists and, uh, it's needed. So that's happening awesome. And, uh, the last thing is sludge hauling, we've been, uh, hauling sludge out from the reactive sludge, you know, the, the fire operators do a real good job getting it down to ninety percent, just really good stuff, the farmers love it, they really like our product because it's clean and it's really full of nitrate. And, uh, we did soil samples and the neighbors out there so far are happy, we're, uh, got our bad rap from, uh, I guess Lincoln City had a little bit of problem with, with some stuff getting into the river and, and just, nothing real bad, but it kinda put a watch on all the sludge hauling out there in Celeste. We were kind of tied into that, but our operator, uh, Gary Walls and, and Daniel Arnold, making sure that the communication was all, the samples came in and everybody knows what the results are and all our stuff is just spotless. And we're doing a really good job with Z-Wall when hauling, so just to let you know that, that we're really on board, doing a good job of making sure it's safe down there.
Okay.
So Brady, Brady, Brady?
I just have one question, Brady, I wanted to ask about that situation that was going on up in, uh, Alsea and Sunset. Has that been taken care of?
Oh, yeah, the, where the, the gentleman has put the, the pipelines in the right, yeah, he has moved that back.
Yeah.
He has, yeah, he has asked if we would put a, uh, no dumping, um, signage up there and I thought I could, maybe do that. As, as a, yeah, because he, he has problems with the neighbors dumping off the cliff, so.
Really?
It's, and it's in a public right of way, so.
What do you mean dumping off?
Yard, they, they yard debris, the branches, grass clippings, they just go to the end of the public right of way, which is Alsea and Duck Hole to the cliff. So I'll, uh, I'll, I'll get a, uh, no dumping ordinance violation sign, uh, and told him I would do it because he's, he's finally worked with us.
Yeah. I'm not sure what was the big expense, moving those back, even though he had to.
I doubt it was more than, or even equal to what he was offering to just simplify the, you know, his original offer, I'm sure it was quite a good last one.
So that's it for my report.
Council of Governments?
No, Perry.
I just have one reminder, Thursday night.
Okay. I'll be here with bells.
I will be there.
Bells, money bells, money bells.
So, see you then.
Six P M?
Six P M.
Thank you, Brady.
Uh, I just wanted to apologize to the council for missing the last budget meeting. I'm not going to offer any excuses, but I will let you know that I am committed to be at the next budget meeting. Contingent on, I'm working in Newport until at least five thirty and as I mentioned to AJ, I really have to get home and feed my cats before I come to the meeting because it's not fair to them to have to go hungry until I get there. So I will be here, I will be late for the meeting, but I will be here as, in as expedient a fashion as possible.
Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, uh, earlier in the year, uh, council agreed, uh, to, uh, take a leadership role in helping our community uh, look at the concept of community foundation, so that we can get a better handle on, uh, our sustainability for signature events like pleated flowers. Uh, and, uh, that action item I took with, uh, Perry and Perry and I decided that we would let it percolate for a while. And, uh, since then, we've gotten, uh, many, many comments, favorable comments about, and just earlier from Debbie, of the concern that all these organizations have about sustainability, so, uh, I want to make a suggestion that I get back with Perry and, and step it up on that, but what I want to suggest is that we invite, we convene a workshop type meeting. Uh, I don't know how we do that, uh, but to let, uh, have a, have a letter, uh, written with your signature, Mr. Mayor, to, uh, all the various, uh, owners, owners of nonprofits and chamber of commerce included, uh, the chairs of the commissions, uh, as well, because they need to be engaged in this discussion, uh, to have that conversation about how we proceed and go forward. Somebody along the way is gonna have to take ownership for it because it's not the city that's gonna do it, but we, somebody needs to take a leadership role and we agreed earlier in the year that it's probably fitting for the city to take a leadership role to give that, uh, this, uh, conversation a jumpstart. So I want to suggest that Perry and I get back together and, and work on a, a letter that would come from, uh, the mayor and go to the folks that I have mentioned and maybe some, some others, to have that conversation in a workshop format. And we can prepare an agenda for it and get everybody's input on it and, uh, get, get that, this conversation going, because it's critical. I could, like, everybody that comes here and talks about it, uh, the chamber talks about it, everybody in the community is talking about sustainability of our signature, uh, things that we do here and the struggle that they have, uh, uh, trying to get this done year after year after year with everybody leaving, passing away or getting older or, you know, okay? So you get what I'm saying?
Oh, I do, it's space.
Okay. So I'm willing to, to go forward and help out.
I'm not talking about the, uh, rig digger space. However, this has been going, an ongoing problem forever and like Debbie said, it's harder getting younger people. So you're gonna have to figure out a way to, uh.
That's right.
To get the younger folks involved.
That's right.
And that's, uh, otherwise it's a lost cause, but it just isn't gonna be sustainable, there's no way.
Yeah, and that's all part of the, the conversation, how to do that, but we have to do something. Would you agree?
I would and, um, I'll just comment on your comment, um, and the mayor's comment, whatever we do, we have to get younger people involved and they have. The one thing I have discovered about all of this is that certain types of people donate time for certain types of events. If it's not a match, they donate, they don't donate time. So whatever we do, we go to revitalize a lot of these, uh, events, we must, must put the recruitment and the interest of those recruits to get them interested in the kind of work, or, that's just a comment.
We need to, we need to have a, 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 a structure that allows us to sustain the volunteer workforce, similar to what the Newport Aquarium is doing, they have a good model down there and we need to do something like that. So, there you go, that's my comments and the timing is just perfect to start thinking about that again, are you okay with that, Perry?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, my comment is about, uh, one of the unsung heroes here on the staff who's retiring, um, Daniel Arleton has worked for us how long?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years and this is a guy who's been down in the trenches, when I say the trenches, I'm talking about the trenches out at the sewer plant. And I would, uh, like to see the mayor and the city council write him a letter of, uh, thank you and recommendation for those fifteen years of service and wishing him well into his retirement. Maybe Perry can help with that letter, um.
Very nice.
I'd like to sign it, too.
Yeah, I want everybody to sign it, absolutely.
Robert? Uh, just, you know, a wild comment, food for thought, we, uh, in our beautiful little town, protected from, you know, the nuances or the strangeness of the city, here we have, uh, the ability for citizens to grow medical marijuana inside this town and it's happening. And yet, our seniors still have to go twelve, fifteen miles that way or fifteen miles that way to get our medications. How's the culture?
Interesting.
This food for thought, that's all. That's my comment.
Joel? Oh, uh, I would just like to, uh, and give a shout out to the public and make the comment that the public is watching. Okay, unlike, uh, previous days and I will say, since the last council meeting, that I've been approached by several citizens of DeKalb with comments on the last council meeting. And, uh, one of the, uh, uh, one of the issues that, that they wanted to bring up to me was the foot trip to Washington and that they were very concerned about, uh, for the plan of that trip, to make sure it was, uh, well-planned and orchestrated. And, uh, I appreciate, in the meantime, I've, I've expressed those feelings to both the mayor and Z and they've been, they have been responsive and, uh, I appreciate that. And, and let's just say that that would include, and this would, this is great, because he's, he's unable to be here, um, is, uh, my, uh, just, sight-disabled musician at the, at the Sehag, Michael Dane watches, uh, watches or listens to, to us here in council chambers because we, uh, thanks to a previous council per, council or councilperson, we've got the, uh, the video and I think that's, that's really valuable to the community to see what we're doing, that's all.
Uh, my comment is, uh, my thanks to Fred Alvisman, he is the, uh, the director of, uh, Council of Governments in Albany. And he has, uh, before he became, uh, the president of COG, he spent, uh, the last thirteen years in Washington DC as a lobbyist and he gave us a lot of valuable information to put together for our trip back to, uh, And he gave us a lot of valuable information to put together for our trip back to, uh, uh, apply for the funds that are, that are there if we, if we approach, uh, those people along Rock Avenue. So, uh, he spent an hour with us this morning on, on a telephone call and, uh, gave some really valuable information. That's it for me. Anybody else? Yes, twenty-two minutes to ten, we're done.